Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order if you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated, and Sean will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
Here.
Councilmember Braggot?
Excused.
Councilmember Brown?
Excused.
Councilmember De Corsi?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
All right, we are going to go to Agenda Modifications because there is the, under the first item of Announcements, Proclamations, and Presentations, it says Introduction of Finance Director Jamie Thomas. I will say welcome to our new Finance Director Jamie Thomas, but Jamie will be sharing a bit about herself and her background with us next week at the study session, so welcome, Jamie, we are thrilled to have you with us. All right.
Also, Resolution 5449 has been added to the agenda.
Yes, thank you. And we have an item, well, an item that will come up under New Business as well. All right. We have one public hearing this evening, it's for the Franchise Agreement Number FRN-19-0013, City Council to Hold a Public Hearing in Consideration of the Franchise Agreement for Seattle SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. Ingrid, do we have a staff presentation?
No staff presentation, this was discussed at the July 22 study session, but happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, thank you. Council, do you have any questions regarding the public hearing? All right, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the franchise agreement for Number FRN-19-0013? Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff, I'm Cory Moreno representing Verizon Wireless, and I just wanted to thank you for supporting our franchise application, and it's very important work for all of us, so thank you very much for your time, and I won't take any more of yours, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for Franchise Agreement Number FRN-19-0013. And before we move into audience participation, I would like to take a moment to share with everyone, I have notified Council and the directors, but for general public, former Mayor Chuck Booth, who served with grace, class, dignity, a penny-pinching heart, and a compassion for those in need, sadly passed away on Saturday, August 3, roughly 12:30 in the afternoon, surrounded by his family. Councilmember Holman and I were able to go up and spend some time with Leela and Chuck on Friday, the day before his passing, and if you would please all keep Leela and family in your prayers at this difficult time, it would be greatly appreciated. The work that Chuck did in this city in the 90s was significant, at a time before we had the recession, Chuck was one who believed in holding on to every penny. Tammy Bothell in our office today said he wouldn't even let us buy paper clips and pencils, coming from a school district background where every penny was precious, and he is part of the reason, and former Mayor Lewis will even credit him with the ability for us to make it through the recession because of the strong financial background that Mayor Booth brought to his position, but he also had a heart bigger than most when it came to helping those who were less fortunate, and he will be greatly missed. He was living at Wesley up on Lee Hill, something that did not go unnoticed, as Councilmember Holman and I were talking with Leela about the fact that if it weren't for Chuck, Wesley at Lee Hill would not have been built. It was Chuck's desire to be able to live in the community that he loved through the end of his life, and believed that everyone should have that opportunity to live their entire life in the city if they so chose, and it was his dedication, dedicated drive and desire to see that type of a resource come to fruition, that is the reason that we have Wesley at Lee Hill today. He was a dear friend, and he will be greatly missed, but as I said, if you would please keep Leela and family in your prayers during this time. There has not been an announced memorial date yet, but we will ensure that that is made public as well. All right, we will move to Audience Participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please keep comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Anyone like to speak for public comment? All right, hearing none, we will move on, we have no correspondence this evening. We will move on to Council Ad-Hoc Committees. The chairs of those ad hoc committees may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks, and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any. Currently, we have one ad hoc committee, that is Finance, and it is chaired by Councilmember Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember De Corsi and myself had an opportunity to review the vouchers this last weekend, and we found that we had no questions and no irregularities that we could see, and we are recommending to the full council that they be approved as printed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
Thank you, Mayor. I move the approval of the Consent Agenda.
Oh, you're, I don't believe you're...
Okay.
No, you just turned it off, there you go.
I move the approval of the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Holman?
Second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
Yes, the Consent Agenda has the minutes of the July 22 study session, the minutes of the July 15 council meeting, and claim vouchers, the grand total there of 2.6 million, pardon me, I made an error, grand total of 2.8 million, and then the payroll vouchers was 2.6 million. That's it.
Thank you. All right, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business, but we do have an item for New Business this evening, it is...
Page two.
Page two did what?
Not copy.
Did not copy? Oh. Okay. Still readable, but just not, not clear.
Boy.
John, it looked fine to us, we didn't see any boringness.
All right, so, do have this item under New Business, it is a letter to Peter Defazio, Chairman of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure in Washington DC, and the Honorable Sam Graves, Ranking Member Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Washington DC. So it is to Chairman Defazio and Ranking Member Graves regarding urging to support the passing of HR 2247, the Promoting United Government Efforts to Save Our Sound, so Puget SOS, as the acronym introduced earlier this year by Congressman Denny Heck and Congressman Derek Kilmer, to strengthen federal support for actions that are essential to Puget Sound recovery. And there was a request that the city sign on to this letter of support. I could have signed as Mayor of the city simply for mayoral support, but after talking with our city attorney, the guidance was that we bring this to council as New Business and ask for your consent or agreement to have the City of Auburn support HR 2247. Councilmember Holman?
I move that the City of Auburn and its council support House Resolution 2247.
Thank you, is there a second? Deputy Mayor Pelosi, since, the deputy mayor actually had brought, brought this to our attention.
I second.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
The Puget Sound is critical to our way of life, and it's obvious we're going to need federal government funding to help support the healing of our beloved Puget Sound.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
In addition to what Councilmember Holman stated, there's, they are going to, the plan is to authorize up to $50 million in funding for Puget Sound Recovery, and that includes salmon. We are on the cusp of the Green River here, and the Rya-9 Water Resource Inventory Area Number 9 is a jurisdiction just a mile away, and the City of Auburn is a member of Rya-9, among other 17 other local cities in our area. We're all, we're all supporting this because it's, it's going to be good, goodness for Puget Sound, goodness for our rivers, goodness for our tributaries that feed the rivers, so we need to support this, we need to show our positive support so that the committees that are involved in this see that the City of Auburn is supporting, from the mayor's signature. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the City of Auburn supporting and signing on to the letter in support of HR 2247, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for bringing that forward. All right, we will move on to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 6723, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, amending ordinance Number 4683 to correct a legal description related to a conditional use permit.
Thank you, do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance Number 6723.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, this involves the correction of the legal description and the address of real property being purchased by the Auburn School District. Scribner's error or a mistake on the original documents need to be corrected before the final purchase, so more of a correction.
Okay, thank you.
No substance.
Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance Number 6723, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5431, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute a franchise agreement between the City of Auburn and Comcast Cable Communications LLC and Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC, a Pennsylvania corporation.
Thank you, do we have a motion? Councilmember De Corsi?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Oh, you're, it's not on. It's that middle one, there you go.
Have to train us all over again on microphone usage. I move to adopt Resolution 5431.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Wells?
Seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman, or, excuse me, De Corsi?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a staff presentation on this on June 24 at our study session, and we discussed the draft resolution, and there was a public hearing to consider this application before the City Council on July 15, and we recommend adopting the resolution.
Thank you. Questions or comments from Council? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5431, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution Number 5445, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement among the cities of Auburn, Bonny Lake, Lakewood, Topeka, and Tacoma, and the Pierce County Sheriff, Pierce County District Attorney, and the Washington State Department of Corrections and the Tacoma Narcotics Enforcement Team.
Thank you, is there a motion? Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 5445.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman?
The Tacoma Narcotics Enforcement Team has been in existence since 1986, this continues or renews the agreement, was presented to us on a study session on July 22, the background for it, and particularly in a time like this where we have so much in the way of narcotics problems, it's, would be a shame to lose this tool, so I'm recommending support for this.
Thank you. Questions or comments from Council? All those in favor of Resolution 5445, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. It passes, and if I might for just a moment go back to Resolution 5431, I just, it would be a terrible omission if I did not say thank you to the dedicated team that has worked diligently on this franchise agreement, along with Terry Davis from Comcast, for the past couple of years at least. The franchise agreement is no small task, as Council might imagine, and there have been many, many, probably hundreds of hours of work by both sides and meetings to ensure that there was a fair and equitable franchise agreement that was put in place, and so I just want to say thank you to everyone who is involved for bringing this to fruition. Thank you. All right, back to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 5446, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to accept and expend federal grant funds administered by the Washington State Military Department for the Reservoir 1 Seismic Control Valve Project.
Thank you, do we have a motion? Councilmember De Corsi?
I move to adopt Resolution 5446.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Holman?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember De Corsi?
This was a project that was completed in early July of 2019, but there were some unforeseen circumstances, and the project was not be able to complete it, and the grant money was dispersed before the original contract expired on June 30, 2019. So this resolution allows the city to be reimbursed for expenses associated with the project, and to execute a new contract for the project that will include funding in the project schedule of the original contract, and the contract will extend for a period of performance for another six months.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5446, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. It passes.
Resolution Number 5449, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the city to apply for, and if awarded, to accept and expend grant funds in the amount of up to $3,100,000 from the Federal Aviation Administration related to the Auburn Municipal Airport Runway Enhancement Program, and amending Resolution 5439.
Thank you, is there a motion? Councilmember Wells?
I move to adopt Resolution 5449.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wells?
Once again, I want to remind our listeners that this is to allow us to apply for, and hopefully get awarded these grant funds. Thank you, Ingrid, for all that you're doing to help us with this goal that we've had for the extension of our airport, and like many of the grants, if not all of the grants that Ingrid does, it's exciting because we're asking for 3.1, up to 3.1 million dollars, and our match is like, that's 90%, and that's with a 5% match from the city and a 5% match from the state. So you can see that we are really fiscally trying to get the most out of our money. Thank you again, Ingrid. So I recommend that we approve this.
Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
This is good money, 3.1 million. This has been in the works for probably eight to 10 years, at least, and it's really going to improve our airport economic development process that goes forward, so amen to this.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution Number 5449, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move on to Mayor and Councilmember reports. At this time, the Mayor and City Council may report on significant items associated with their appointed position on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Pelosi.
No report.
My goodness.
Could I hear that again?
I know. I should get sick more often.
No, we don't want you sick more often. All right, dep, or, thank you Deputy Mayor Pelosi, Councilmember Holman?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
No report.
Councilmember Wells?
I have a small report, and it's back on Chuck Booth. We've talked a lot about his quality leadership here in the city, but prior to the city, I feel like I can speak to the leadership that he provided in the Auburn School District for over 30 years. He served as Deputy Mayor, and prior to that, he was a counselor in Eastern Washington, moved here, I believe he might have been hired by Jim Fugit, one of the smarter things that Jim Fugit did, but for 30 years, he led our school district into what continues to be one of the better school districts in the state. During his tenure, he was responsible for vocational ed, secondary ed, elementary ed. One of his favorite things was special education and the Counseling Department, health services, federal programs, alternative ed, to name a few, and you can see, the mayor has spoken about his great heart and his compassion for people in need, and you can see this in the programs that he led for 30 years. He always had an open door, and he always had time, he was the first person to work in the morning, and the last person to leave. He gave of himself professionally, he gave from his heart, he belonged to numerous organizations in the community, from his church, to Rotary, to our Lions, and all of the organizations out there. I was lucky to be hired by him in 1982. He was a great writer, and he was very, very thrifty. We used to kid him that he was wearing the same loafers in 1982 as when he retired. A great man. He leaves a wonderful family, a wife that's active in PEO, and church, and two children, and we're again very, very fortunate that they were able to remain in our community doing quality leadership in our schools, and also in our city. Thank you.
Councilmember De Corsi?
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, August 6, along with Anthony Avery, our new senior planner, we attended the newly formed Affordable Housing Committee meeting down at the PSRC building, had a very full agenda, we actually spent about two and a half hours on the agenda overall, going through everything we needed to talk about with the wide array of membership, and the major topic of the day was reviewing House Bill 1406. If you recall, House Bill 1406 was the measure that provided new revenues to each individual city without tax increases, so it's existing money, and we get our share in our portion of it, and Auburn will receive about $150,000 the first year. There was an extensive discussion regarding House Bill 1406, and that included committee members reviewing potential options on ways to use the revenue to ensure the maximum impact of funding, and the maximum impact on those that need to be served. So each member presented what the cities have begun to do so far, and I made our, everyone aware that we have a draft resolution that will be prepared and come before our city here very shortly, to show our intent to enact the provisions of 1406. There was also a review, Chair Balducci asked each committee member to look at what they believe would be the priorities that they would establish, that the Affordable Housing Committee would recommend to local jurisdictions, and there were four different items that we looked at. One was the prioritizing of the money to maximize the impact, directing the funding to the highest needs, prioritizing spending to protect against displacement, and the speed of how we use the resources that are provided by the legislature. And the first one on prioritizing money for the maximum impact was looking at organizations such as Arch and Skip, which we are part of Skip, and ways we can accomplish the maximizing of the funding. There was however, my former boss actually from the Housing Authority, made a recommendation, or suggestion actually, on potentially pooling all the money together in one pot, and allowing King County to be the distributor of the funds, and also for them to look at how we provide that source for all jurisdictions to meet the critical needs, so it was a suggestion, and the suggestion will be taken up by the committee along with others as we go into our meeting in September. The directing of funding to the highest need, we're looking at targeting the support for populations with the greatest need, and that need has been identified as households earning 30% or less of the area median income, but the committee is also looking at recommending that the need be flexible so households up to 50% of AMI can be served. The prioritizing of spending to protect against displacement included ways to protect communities of color and low-income communities from that displacement. And lastly, speed was looking at, actually a strong consensus of the committee to look at ways to expend the funding most effectively and quickly, and some of the suggestions included a focus on preservation of existing housing, which we can hear in Auburn, support, providing programs for preventing homelessness, rental assistance, and for use for shovel-ready projects, and also looking at the potential bonding against revenues as a potential measure for maximizing the funding quickly, and also the bonding will provide additional resources to provide additional housing support across the region. So, very good meeting, our next meeting is in September, and we'll be taking up these items and others, and shortly after that, we'll be providing some recommendations back to the county executive, and then back to local jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Corsi. A few items, a lot of the work that's been Few items, a lot of the work that's being done right now, homelessness and affordable housing are the top topics, it appears, for for this region. On Monday, July fifteenth, I attended the second meeting, no, sorry, that was the first meeting of the Regional Homelessness Coalition that was made up of three members of the King County Council, three members of the Seattle City Council, and three members of Sound Cities Association. The other two Sound Cities Association members are Bellevue Mayor John Chalmanac and Renton Council President Ed Prince. And as we have talked about previously, there is a goal to have a regional governance model on homelessness. And right now, King County and Seattle have entered into an I L A, but they are looking at what, what the makeup of this regional governance model would be. There have been numerous studies that have been paid for by King County, by the City of Seattle, and by business as well as philanthropy. The one thing that they can all agree on is that we have a fractured system right now for delivering the services for homelessness. And so trying to come up with a new way of oversight on the funding for homelessness services and to ensure that that money is being utilized in the most appropriate way has been the topic of a great deal of discussion. I would like to tell you that there is a unanimous support for any one individual way of, of providing that regional governance model, but that is simply not the case. We have had a couple of those meetings. We had another one on Monday, July twenty-ninth. And then, again, going over, King County Councilmember Rod Dombowski has come up with kind of a hybrid approach that was discussed at that meeting. And then on Tuesday, the thirtieth, we met with other Sound Cities Association electeds to talk about what's important to the cities outside of Seattle. One of the areas that has become one of conflict is whether there should be elected officials on that executive or oversight board. The City of Seattle right now is stating that they don't believe there should be elected officials on that oversight board. But I will tell you that the Sound Cities Association elected officials, the majority of the mayors around the room, were all emphatic that there should be elected leadership on that board so that, because we are those that are held accountable for how that money is being spent. And so there will be more decisions to come on that. I will tell you that the, the agreement will be transmitted to both the King County Council and the Seattle City Council in August for their review. They would like to have this agreement in place prior to year end. I don't know if that is a realistic goal or not, but we will continue to be a voice in that discussion for Sound Cities Association as well as the City of Auburn individually. I've been proud to be doing that work, but we are not done yet. We have a great deal more to do. And as I mentioned, most of, most of the meetings recently have been around homelessness and affordable housing. On July twenty-third, we had a convening monthly faith leaders roundtable. This was the first time that we have had many of the pastors, reverends, and others, leaders in the faith-based community around the same table for quite a while. And the goal was to discuss what Auburn is doing around homelessness and how the faith-based community can play a role in that, as some of the other communities have done. And most of, well, actually, it was, it was unanimous that every one of the churches represented around that table or temples or other places of worship have agreed that they want to play a role, whether by financially supporting the programs or by providing services within the organization. They are all ready to get started and I was very, very encouraged by, by that conversation and the compassion that was displayed in that room. So there will be more to come on that as we continue to meet. On Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at the monthly SCORE, that's the South County Corrections Facility that Auburn is a member of, at that, at that meeting, we were approving the budget for two thousand and twenty. And there was a motion made because in reviewing the budget, there was almost eleven million dollars in unencumbered reserves and so, or undesignedated reserves, reserves. And so there was a motion made to take an additional one million dollars from those reserves and allocate it out to the cities, to the member cities. And so that is good news for Auburn because we could be up to thirty-six percent of, of the responsible responsibility for payment of at SCORE for next year. So that could mean up to three hundred and sixty additional dollars that will be allocated for us that we will not have to provide in funding. So that was good news. I thought worthy of sharing with all of you. On Friday, the twenty-sixth, we had our monthly Skip Executive Board Meeting. Councilmember DeCoursey was mentioning Skip. That is South County Housing and Homelessness Partners, of which Auburn is a member and Auburn is the hosting agency. And for this year, I have been selected as the chair. We had quite a discussion on House Bill fourteen oh-six as well. And at the end of that conversation, there was a resolution made by the members of Skip to encourage the member cities to take the opportunity of receiving those funds from House Bill fourteen oh-six. And so that passed unanimously. And as Councilmember DeCoursey said, we will be having a resolution coming forward ourselves in the near future. The discussion then would be around where does that funding go? Some of the smaller cities in Skip, their portion might be seven to ten thousand dollars and realizing that that funding doesn't go very far within their cities. So there was discussion of how does that funding, do we pool all of the money into Skip and allow Skip to do some larger, some larger things with that funding as opposed to each individual city that's a member doing something with the funding. And so there will be more conversations, obviously, because that decision will be made by each individual council that is a member city. On Saturday, the twenty-seventh, as many of you know and many of you probably attended, was the White River Buddhist Temples Bonadoree and it was their fiftieth anniversary. So it was an honor to be there to welcome the guests. There was overflow, overflow parking as there usually is. Lori Matsukawa was there and as we were up doing welcomes, she turned around and she said, Mayor, can you do something to get us more parking? I said, well, it's a private venue. I can't really do anything for that, but we will, we agree that there, it is such a popular event that, that we do need more parking. And then when I left the White River Buddhist Temple, I went up to the Muckleshoot Casino for a banquet that was for V F W post seventeen forty-one. It was a celebration of their ninetieth anniversary in the City of Auburn. So as the city was in its infancy, so was the V F W post seventeen forty-one. And they have been amazing partners to the city that entire time. We are proud to be recognized as a veterans' city. And I would also like to let you know that Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Pelosi was honored for his dedicated service to post seventeen forty-one. Congratulations, Bill, and thank you for your outstanding service. Quite an accomplishment at a time when that post wasn't sure they were going to remain in existence. Deputy Mayor Pelosi, as you all know, is dogged in his approach and he ensured that the post was able to remain stable. So thank you for that and congratulations. We have had a couple of our community picnics. We had one at Game Farm Park on July sixteenth and we had one last week on Tuesday, July thirtieth. We do have more coming up. We have a summer movie at Sunset Park this Friday night, starting at six P M. It's movie and, oh, that was last Friday, sorry. It was a good one. Except for the sprinklers went on. So there is one this Friday night at Les Govee Park. Movie and music, right? Okay. And then don't forget, on Saturday, the tenth, we have the Auburn Days Parade down Main Street, I believe, at eleven A M. And then the festivities are at Les Govee with Auburn Fest for the celebration for the rest of that day. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any need for an executive or closed session?
No, Your Honor.
We are adjourned. Thank you.